For April 7th at 5:00 PM. Please stand and, let's see, Councilmember Hernandez, would you leave his on the pledge?
Thank you. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call please?
Yes, roll call is complete and all members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited if you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar. Please so indicate by filling out a request to speak card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If any special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics, as your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decision made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Public comments, do we, this is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters on the closed session agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If any special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We have no comment.
At this time, I'll ask for motion to go into closed session.
So, second.
I have a first by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Rose. Call for the vote.
And the motion passes unanimously?
Thank you. With that, we'll proceed to closed session.
The current council met in close session to consider three items. One regarding anticipated litigation related to facts and circumstances that may result in litigation but which the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiff or plaintiffs, provided direction of staff and council and took no reportable action. The second regarding a conference of labor negotiators related to all unrepresented employees. And the third regarding public employee appointment for a position titled Assistant City Manager. There, the council provided direction to staff and council and the city manager but took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at 7:03 PM, I call to order the city council meeting, Barstow Fire District Everyone, please stand and we are going to have Pastor Joe Vale come forward for our prayer.
We're very thankful for your blessings to us. We thank you with this lovely weather. We thank you for the desert. Lord, we appreciate the blessings that you have with that. We pray for all the people of Barstow. We pray that you touch the hearts and lives of each and every one. Help all the citizens to make good choices about things of life, about what to do and how to do. We pray for the city council, which will bless them and help them in their decision-making process. Help the leaders of each department. Touch the hearts and lives, Lord, of all the employees of the city of Barstow. Pray that you give each one wisdom, guidance, and understanding, and doing the very best job possible for our community. We ask you to guide and direct each and every one. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing. I'm going to call forward to lead us in our pledge, Dean and John Paul Borella.
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, roll call is complete and all members are present.
Thank you. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar, please so indicate by filling out a request to speak card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Our code of ethics, as your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and unanimously approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, civility, and courtesy. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Review and approve of the agenda. This is the time for members of the governing board to call for rearranging the ordered agenda, adding items, or to remove items from the agenda, or removing items from the consent calendar for discussion and/or separate action. Items may be only added to the agenda as allowed by state law, including Government Code, Section 54954.2, Subdivision B, allowing emergency items to be added by majority vote, and allowing items that arose to the city's attention after the agenda posting deadline but which require immediate action to be added by a two-thirds vote of the council members present at the meeting, or if less than two-thirds of the council members are present, a unanimous vote of those members present. May I have a motion for a consent calendar, please?
I'll move. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the agenda, but I'd also like to request in this motion to remove item number five, to table it.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Rose to approve the agenda to table number five, and the second by council member Hernandez. Call for the vote.
And the motion to approve the agenda tabling item five passes 5-0.
With that, we'll move on to agenda item number four, certificate of achievement to Dean and John Paul Borella. If I have the council, please step forward. Okay. So, as we had requested, when we have anybody in our community represent as well, we want to recognize that here. So, we have a couple certificates here, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to have council member Williams explain about these great, great young men that we have right here.
You know, it takes great pride in us to recognize our youth, but when they do something outstanding, something amazing, you know, something that, oh, let him cry, he's good, he's good, he's a Borella, he's going to, he's going to do that for a while. To do something amazing, it honors us all as council and mayor, Mayor Protem, to say, hey, you know, we're proud of you, we appreciate you, and we thank you for all the hard work in representing our city. I just want you to know one thing, it took grandpa 18 years when he did it. It only took you six.
It's great to see them, other than at church taking up a whole pew, so. So, Dean Borella. Face the camera. Just, just, just hold it. So, Dean Borella, for outstanding achievement and exceptional performance as a member of the Barstow Wrestling Club, and for placing sixth out of the 22 in the competition, we are proud of you. Signed and sealed by the mayor, Mayor Protem and council. So, just. Oh, I'm sorry. So, John Paul, for outstanding achievement, accessible skills, dedication, and performance as a member of the Barstow Wrestling Club, and for securing first place in the competition, we are very proud of you.
The mom and dad want to tell us about the young man here?
Donovan, he actually was top 12 over at state. We didn't wrestle at Reno. He took sixth in the nation at Reno just last Sunday.
Okay, we're going to get Donovan back. All right? Okay. All right. And let's recognize the parents, okay?
Take one big step. Okay. Everyone look up. One, two, three. It's next to you.
I'm going to give this to you, so you can make sure that they watch it and take care of it. But this is from all of us. We appreciate it. It is a championship ring. I'd give it to them, but they're probably throwing it around. Hey, now you can show grandpa your ring.
Congratulations. I'm so happy to have your whole family. So, to you, Harry.
Can we get you everybody back, please?
Here goes grandpa. You can hold the championship.
Come on, come on.
Don't be scared of those.
Look good in that suit.
Okay, everyone ready? Everyone look up on three. One, two, three. Perfect.
Good evening, mayor, city council members, and city staff. I'm Beth Lyons. I'm the executive director for the Public Entity Risk Management Authority, otherwise known as PERMA, and I'm here tonight to congratulate you and recognize the city for being PERMA's most engaged member. That recognition speaks volumes, not just about your participation, but about your determination to stay involved, stay present, and stay committed. The city's been through some difficult seasons in terms of risk management and its losses, but it's clear that you've continued to show up, and you have the intention to improve things one step at a time, and that persistence matters. It builds trust, and it lays the groundwork for real lasting progress. So, it's my pleasure to note that while there is still work to be done, I would like you to take a moment and just reflect on where you are right now and how far you've come. So, it's my pleasure to present this award to the city, and thank you again, and congratulations.
Consent calendar public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on all matters on the consent calendar. Speakers are asked to limit their comments on all consent items to three minutes or less. A request to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a 48-hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Prior to calling a public comment, I'm going to announce that I will abstain on number 11.
And I will be abstaining on number 12.
Do I have any more abstentions? Public comment, please, Madam Clerk.
We have no more, no comment on consent items, and with that, I'll go ahead and read it. Item seven is the minutes for the regular meeting held February 18, 2025 at 6:00 PM. The recommended action is to approve minutes as presented. Item eight, the minutes for the joint special meeting held March 3, 2025 at 6:00 PM. The recommended action is to approve minutes as presented. Item nine, the minutes for the regular meeting held March 17, 2025 at 5:30 PM. The recommended action is to approve minutes as presented. Item 10, the ratification of accounts payable expenditures. The recommended action is to approve and ratify expenses as audited for checks 98571 through 98991 totaling $9,810,141.42, and wires 1098 through 1115 totaling $717,774.90. For the agency breaks, break down as follows. City, $10,221,656.69. Fire, $306,259.53 for a grand total of $10,527,916.32. Item 11, the approval for Mayor Silva to travel to the city-county 2025 conference in Lake Arrowhead, California. The recommended action is to approve travel for Mayor Silva to attend the city council, sorry, city-county conference in Lake Arrowhead scheduled for May 8 through 9, 2025, and that is the end of the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have any questions on consent? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
I have a motion by council member Hernandez, a second by council member Ben Noble. Any discussion? Call for the vote. I'm sorry, go ahead, council member Williams.
I would, I do have a page and a half that I will be submitting for questions on credit card buys, so I'll be giving that to the finance director to give me some answers.
Thank you. See nobody else, I call for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, it got cleared. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I'm really happy to see that our mayor is fully engaged, and he's traveling to continue to get professional development, and I look forward to your return so that you can report out on what you can bring to us. It's going to be invaluable, I'm sure. So, thank you.
Thank you. There will be a report out. Call for the vote.
And the motion carries unanimously on consent with the exception of Mayor Silva abstaining on item 11. And the motion carries unanimously on consent with the exception of Mayor Silva abstaining on item 11.
Okay, we have, uh, no deferred items. We have no public hearings. We'll go on to business. Item number 12, the community promotional fund application from the High Desert Junior Shooters. The recommended action is approve the community promotional fund in kind donation in the amount of $1,050 for waiver of fees to use the Cora Harper Center. And who is presenting this?
Uh, that would be me, sir.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Before you is a request from the High Desert Junior Shooters, who will be hosting their sports shooting banquet on May 17, 2025, at the Cora Harper. The organization is requesting financial assistance in the form of a fee waiver of facility rental fees for the amount of $1,050. This request is made under the Measure Q Community Promotional Fund Program, which provides funding assistance for events that benefit the Barstow community. The High Desert Shooters have obtained a one-day ABC license to serve alcohol at the banquet, but per city policy, the events serving alcohol are required to have an armed security personnel present. However, the organization is requesting an exception to this request, noting that several retired sheriffs and police officers will be in attendance. The applicant is present for further explanation or to address any concerns that the council may have under this request.
Okay, questions? I have Councilmember Williams.
Just how many, uh, officers are gonna be there? Do we know the exact number, and any current, or all retired?
All retired, and I would defer to, um, Jim to address those, those questions.
Yes, please step up.
Albert Toer, retired Barstow PD.
Jim Eichler. Retired, local businessman retired, so. Uh, the question about that, we, we have Albert. Here, he handles all our guns on the board and stuff that, that we are giving away for the fundraiser for these kids. And then we have three different retired sheriffs out of Ridgecrest that are involved with us and are there representing us. This is a family gathering. We have kids down, if they're wa, they're walking around. They're like, like the one we just saw here. They're crying and screaming, and they're having a great time playing with the helium balloons. This is not a rowdy function. We've done this for eight years and have never had a mishap at all there. And that's why we request the waiver on that, as far as that goes.
Is that gentleman next to you gonna be there the whole time?
He'll be there the whole time.
I'm good with it.
Let's see if they got anything else.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Protim Rose.
Thank you. So I do have a question. Has this been the norm that you've asked for the waiver when alcohol is being served?
Yes.
And my question is, what's the guarantee that the three or four officers or retirees are not going to have alcohol themselves?
They, they, none of them do out, he doesn't drink.
I'm diabetic.
When he's, when he's at the thing. The other ones are a little older. They're not that way. They're, they're there to keep an eye on things, to enjoy their families and their grandkids and that. They're not there to have the alcohol. And the alcohol kinda helps us in a way because it loosens the people up there. These people aren't getting drunk. They're, they're social drinking, and they bid more money.
They're social drinking, but there's children around.
There are children around. They have kids and grandkids there.
Um, can you kind of explain to me what the liability would be if there was a mishap, and we're going off the honor system, and let's say one of the officers decides to have a drink?
So at that point, we would tap into both our insurance and the insurance of the nonprofit sponsor of the event. Uh, the nonprofit event sponsors' insurance would take the first cut. If that was inadequate somehow, uh, then the city's insurance would kick in. Uh, we would do require robust insurance and indemnity provisions in these kinds of agreements. And we would expect that, I don't know if we have onsite monitoring it from the city employee's side, but we certainly would expect our rules and regulations to be followed.
And yes, I got confirmation. We do have onsite monitoring from the city staff.
Yes, normally when an event starts, staff will be present to make sure that if, especially like if there's security guards that are supposed to be there monitoring the event, that they're present. They also just make sure and check everything off that, uh, the applicant has requested has been done and available to the applicant.
When the event starts, but what about when it ends? Because that's when the consumption is greater.
Right, and it's throughout the event, because after they are done, they will be there to lock up.
And, um, I guess my concern is, and I think this is a great event. I know that we've been having it year to year. My concern is we have another event that comes in, and while my family members are retired police officers, I would hate to, um, open up a can of worms to say, well, that's okay. I mean, at what point do we say we really need for us to follow the policy? To say that after, you know, for every 50, if an alcohol is gonna be provided, that you have to have a security person? So I just don't want us to get into a position where others are gonna ask for the same parameters.
Yeah, and we would just have to address it case by case. So if that was, um, something that somebody else would wanna bring forward, then that would be before you as well. City manager?
And yes, I do understand with your concern. I understand that, uh, this is an annual event that has been taking place, and I don't believe there has been any, um, any issues that have come up. I think this is something that we would really wanna look at. If any issues did come up, then we would address it more, uh, more appropriately at that point. But I think at this time, not having any issues historically, that I would like, that, that I would like to, wait until something were to happen before, I shouldn't say happen, but if there were any, with staff being present, that's something that can be monitored. If there happened to be anything that come up, then we would address it differently and, and take a different approach in the future.
And I appreciate, and I appreciate that. And I, yes, I was gonna defer back to our attorney, because that's, it's the liability that I'm really concerned about, um, how this would play out if something were to happen.
Right, so that's where it goes back to the insurance. One is the participants in the activity would bear some responsibility, particularly if a participant that incurred losses and a participant who was drinking to excess were the same participant. That would create, or if there was losses incurred, the participant who was, caused them was drinking to excess. Certainly, their personal responsibility is the first rung of the liability ladder. But then the event's insurance, and then our insurance third. The other component I'll note on a bigger picture presence is staff is already in process on looking at an ordinance per prior discussion with the council, rules and policy regarding alcohol on any city property and stepping up our regulation of that. So that isn't yet done. I know this event has got a timing component, but that's something we're looking at on the proactive side to move that forward. And the key in the meantime is robust insurance, along with that monitoring. And I would assume that staff could step up their monitoring of the event. The last thing I'll note is if somebody shows up tomorrow asking for the same thing and doesn't have that demonstrated track record of running a successful event without losses, without problems, they would go through a very different process.
Thank you, Mr. Summers and, uh, Ms. Kling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Ben Noble.
No, I just had a question. A, um... Thank you. Hey, is, is there a reason why we are selling alcohol at the event? Is this some, a fundraiser or something, or is this?
This is how we, we get our funds to, it costs us, we pay for the, the ammunition. We give the kids the instruction for handling and respecting firearms. They get to shoot competitively at different gun clubs. We pay for the targets that are shot, and we pay for the food that they eat there. This is, these kids don't have an opportunity to do this. Lot of parents can't afford it, aren't involved with this. This is where we get the majority of our funds for this, and it is a dinner. It's a dinner put on, uh, a sit-down dinner, and as you have a sit-down, there are a lot of people. Like a beer, or maybe some wine with that dinner, and that's why we provide that. And like I say, they're just relaxing and having a good time. It's, uh... I got, I got eight years here and four years in Ridgecrest doing this, and we've never had an incident at all. Because, as I say, it's a family function. When it's over, they're gone, and the rest of us have to stay. Not have to, but we stay and clean up and do all that. And, and we've just never even had an incident. And it saves us, provides more money that we can put back to these kids.
All right, thank you. That was only my question. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no more questions from council. Are there any requests to speak from the public?
We do not.
Okay, having no requests to speak from the public, I'll call for a motion.
Also moved to approve.
And I second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protim Rose, a second from Councilmember Ben Noble. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to approve item 12 carries for, with one recusal from Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Could we get Councilmember Hernandez back, please? Councilmember Hernandez, before I move on to the next item, could you, uh, please state the re, or the, yeah, the cause for your recusal?
My nephew is on that organization.
Thank you.
So I didn't want a conflict of interest.
We, we knew that, but the public needs to know. Thank you.
And I'll just ask you to confirm as well that your nephew is financially independent of you. Thank you.
All right, we move on to item 13, Appointment of Measure Q Residence Oversight Commission. We are appointing one at large in District 2, District 3, and District 4. The recommended action, city council appoint the following individuals to the Residence Oversight Committee. District 2, Samantha Ryan. District 3, Ben Rosenberg. District 4, Councilmember, Councilmember Williams is requesting a council decision, and at large, Sonia Compton-Rae. Who's presenting?
I hope that would be me, sir. So the item before you is the Resident Oversight Commission Committee Members, which was originally established by the council through ordinance 960 in 2019, and then an update, uh, 963-2019, which clarified the terms and length of the commission. The following seats are currently open due to either resignation or end of term, which was the at-large District 2, District 3, and District 4. At the November 3, 2024 council meeting, council directed the city clerk's office to open the application period for new commissioners. The original date was December 16, 2024, and the extended deadline was March 4, 2025. A total of seven applications were received, one with District 1, two for District 2, two for District 3, and two for District 4.
Okay, questions from council? Mayor Protim Rose?
Thank you. Wasn't sure what was going on there, so I was a little confused as to what was shifting up here.
There's, uh, someone got worried that the meeting's not being broadcast.
And I'll note, that doesn't prevent us from continuing the meeting legally. The presence in the room is all we need to continue a meeting legally. Although I would look to the manager to have the staff sort out the broadcast, because I know it's important for our community.
But did you have a question on the item?
Um, I do have a question.
Okay, please.
So, just to clarify that, let me get back to there, sorry. Just to clarify that, that the, um, appointments, are they, are they by district, or can they be from, from citywide?
The council could choose to set the district city, the appointment citywide. At present, per council's prior action, it's by district. The initial setup was districted, but Section 226-030 of the ordinance is clear that the council may elect it to be citywide rather than by district. At present, its staff noticed it by district per prior council direction.
And so in future, we could, um, would, we could change it, or is this a part of the ordinance that is part of the districts?
No, this isn't tied to it. So the council could, by tonight's action or the future item, uh, set that applications be taken citywide for these seats rather than by district.
And my only other question is, um, District 4, Councilman Williams is requesting council direction. And from what I see, we had two applicants, so I'd like to know what, um...
I'm gonna ask for a motion to specify, and then the council will be able to vote. The motion will have to specify which candidate for District 4.
Well, I think we should, if I could jump in, perhaps explain a little more.
Please.
So, the, one of the two candidates for District 4 is a spouse of a sitting planning commissioner, which raised concern for Councilmember Williams, hence the request, as stated in the staff report, that the council provide direction as to whether that having two spouses, one in a planning commission, one in Measure Q Resident Oversight Commission, created a conflict or an, or a situation that should not be created, and thus to pick the other candidate, or alternatively direct that applications be opened citywide rather than district-focused. Would be the other option there. And I don't know if we, I don't think the attendant packet included the applications, but, uh, it would be reasonable to surface the names at this point.
Yes, and I do have, um, the other applicants that were received. One was from Dolores Padilla. She's in, residing in District 2. Uh, William Kelsey is residing in District 3. And then, uh, Marshall Wiesma, District 4, and Darren Fixstad, District 4 as well.
And so to sum it up, the council's basic options would be make the appointments for the three seats as requested by the relevant council members for District 2, 3, and the mayor at-large seat. And then for District 4, pick one of the two applicants that present, or direct that applications be opened citywide, either for just District 4 or for all the seats. Or keep District 4 as a District 4 seat, but direct staff to advertise again. Or appoint one of the two candidate, one of the two applicants.
Well, we do have two applicants.
Absolutely. Appoint one of the two applicants is absolutely a choice as well.
Yes.
And, uh, Councilmember Williams, as my understanding, I'll ask him to confirm, does not have a preference among those choices, but would like his colleagues.
That's correct. I don't, but because of the situation, I don't want the public to look at me in a way that we're moving forward with, uh, a family because of, uh, the perception of what goes on. So that's why I did this.
Thank you. Mayor Protim, any more questions?
Yeah, so, um, if that were the perception, then the obvious choice would have been to pick the other candidate. Because it puts us in a precarious, um, situation, although I think that both candidates, um, are, are well qualified to, to do the job. So, um, I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other questions, and when you're ready to call.
There are other questions. There, there are other questions. Um, I, I have one. I would like the city attorney to please clarify there is no conflict between the planning commission and the Measure Q committee.
Legally, it's not a conflict, no, because they don't oversee each other. You couldn't be on council in both commissions.
Okay.
But legally, it's not a conflict. It's something for the council to take into account as the council may desire.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ben Noble?
No, you asked my question.
Okay. I see no more questions from the council. Do we have public requests to speak?
Yes, we have one. Mr. Ted Wiesma.
Welcome, Mr. Wiesma.
As you know, the, uh, Measure Q Committee has really not been able to meet for about a year and a half now. There's been quote-unquote "meetings," but never an official meeting of Measure Q Commission. So I'm not sure what conflict you guys see, but I'll make it clear. We've had a good candidate, that good candidate wants to continue on, and if necessary, I will resign my position.
Thank you, Mr. Wiesma.
We have no more comment on this item.
Do I have any more questions from the council? See no questions, I'll entertain a motion. And just to clarify, uh, per the attorney, the motion can be for at-large District 2 and 3, and to continue 4, or a name can be put in to number 4 within that motion. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and motion to accept the names listed, and I would like to also, um, add to the name of District 4 for Mr., um, Darren Fixstad.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve, uh, as recommended, and putting in District 4, uh, Mr. Fixstad. Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a first from Mayor Protim, a second from Councilmember Ben Noble. Does anyone need clarification on the motion? Discussion, Councilmember Ben Noble.
I'm not in the queue. Sorry about that.
I'm not in the queue. Sorry about that.
I see no discussion. I call for the vote.
And the motion passes four with one abstention from Councilmember Williams. For District Two, Samantha Ryan. District Three, Ben Rosenberg. District Four, Darren Fixstad, and at-large Sonia Compton Ray.
Thank you. Moving on to item 14 is the City Barstow Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the year ending June 30, 2024. The recommended action, staff recommends the city council take the following action. Receive and file the City of Barstow's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the year ending June 30, 2024. And presenting is that our finance director?
And if you just give us a moment, we're pulling our auditor in via Zoom call. And while we're doing so, I just wanted to note that we had some additional changes to the annual comprehensive financial report over the course of the weekend. So the documents that were provided in the agenda had some additional changes. I have printed out those changes and laid those on the dais for you to review. But those changes are as follows. Page 12 depicts a graph, and the graph in particular in question is the graph at the bottom. It was originally pulling from a different source, and so some of the numbers there needed to be readjusted for the current year's revenue. That has been updated. Page 11 reflects a change to the beginning net position number. So what is reflected overall is the current picture as far as net position. There is no change in that number. It's just the beginning number has changed, which causes the ending number to change as well. And that, that particular change is reflected in several different schedules that go throughout the books. So page 11 affects page 24 and 25, page 36, as well as page 134 and 135. So again, I wanted to repeat that those numbers do not reflect or do not change the bottom line. They just reflect a change to the starting position. So I see that we have Jamie on the call. Jamie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect. Jamie is our senior manager from LSL. He and his team conducted our audit this year. This will be the third year that we've worked with his company on the audit. And so we will walk through a PowerPoint presentation that reflects some of the items that were found in this year's audit. So Jamie, I will let you take it away.
All right, thank you so much. All right, like was mentioned, my name is Jamie Lambert. I'm a senior manager here at LSL. Additionally, as part of our team, we had Brandon Young, CPA, who is a partner here. And we collectively make up the management team that was involved in your audit this year. Just to briefly go over the scope of our engagement, LSL was engaged by the City of Barstow to perform procedures to perform the financial audit for the city, the Barstow Fire Protection District, the Odessa Water District, for the year ended June 30, 2024, in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. And we were also engaged to perform a single audit over the federal award programs for the year ended June 30, 2024, in accordance with federal uniform guidance. Additionally, we did opine on the city's use of Measure Q. During interim field work, which was held from March 28 through March 31, 2024, we examined the city's internal controls, provided feedback to management. We performed an audit risk assessment and then planned our year-end audit procedures to respond to the risk assessment that we performed. We then performed year-end field work procedures from October 14 to October 25, 2024, where we did a detailed testing of account balances and transactions. We did some compliance testing with laws, regulations, grant agreements, and contracts, as well as some single audit testing and any other procedures that might have been necessary to provide sufficient appropriate audit evidence. The results of our audit were pretty straightforward. We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, on all of the financial statements mentioned, which means that all of the financial statements were accurate and reliable as of June 30, 2024. We also issued a report on internal control and compliance, meaning no significant deficiencies, and we found no significant deficiencies in internal control, no material weaknesses in internal control, and no material noncompliance with laws, regulations, grants, et cetera. We also issued an unmodified auditor's opinion on the City of Barstow's compliance with the requirements of major federal award programs. That would be the single audit, which just means the city is in compliance with the terms and conditions of the major federal award programs that we tested at June 30, 2024. Additionally, we identified no going concern doubts and no fraud, waste, or abuse during the fiscal year. We had no disagreements with management about application of accounting principles, and we had no difficulty conducting our audit. And we determined that all estimates used by management preparing the financial statements were reasonable. The only change from the prior year was the implementation of GASB 100, which was required. So during the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024, the city changed accounting principles related to clarity in accounting for changes and error corrections. And I just want to note that for, you know, the city's Barstow statements, there were, there was no effect by this change. And then just some high-level financial highlights, net position overall increased $2 million to $65.9 million, and I just want to clarify that that doesn't mean that the city just has almost $70 million laying around. The, more than that amount is invested in capital assets for the city, and then also there are restricted funds for specific purposes of about $6 million for, you know, that are restricted due to, you know, regulation or grant agreements, things of that nature. Overall, total revenues equaled $61 million, which was a decrease of 1.9% from 2023. Expenditures equaled $59 million, which is an increase of 3.2%. Total assets increased $7 million or 4.6% from the prior year, and total liabilities decreased 3.5 million or 3.7% from the prior year. And these highlights are for the city as a whole, so they encompass not just the city's actor, but also the Fire Protection District and the Odessa Water District are encompassed in these numbers as well. And that concludes, you know, that was a very high-level presentation, but if there are any questions, I'll be happy to take those.
Yes, any questions for staff? We're Mr. Lambert from LSL. Councilmember Manobel?
Yeah, good evening, Jamie. Hey, just had a question on a slide where it talks about the results of the audit, and you mentioned there was no sufficient deficiencies in the internal audit. What you consider significant? What do you consider significant?
In the, in internal control? So a significant deficiency would just be if we found something and it didn't rise to the level of material. Material weakness would be defined by the materiality related to the audit, which is something we would calculate internally. And I can't really share those numbers with you, because that would be giving away the audit. But, so as long as, if it was an issue that we found that was, that could lead to a material weakness but did not rise to the level of material weakness, we would consider that to be significant.
So when you say significant, so we did find some deficiencies, but it wasn't a sufficient deficiency that would arise to the occasion that we needed to do something?
Well, no, sir. Actually, so in accounting, in auditing, in auditing rules, we only have significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, and then noncompliance. So if there were something like what you described, we might consider that to be a, not a significant deficiency. We might call that a noncompliance, but not even a material noncompliance. We might just release a different management letter that might say that we found something that could become significant later, and we didn't find anything of that nature. We just don't usually report that we didn't find anything of that nature.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manobel. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, sir. Can you explain the audit with Measure Q as far as what you guys did as far as percentages or the exact expenditures for items, or how you did that?
Okay, so what we did is we obtained and read a copy of the ordinance that was passed for Measure Q. We reviewed, you know, along with all the other internal controls. We reviewed internal controls over collection management and use of Measure Q revenues. We traced the sale tax remittances and then just verified that the funds were being used as stated in, you know, the ordinance, just at a high level.
Expenditures, did you have a list of expenditures from the city by percentages or by each expenditure itself?
So we had, we just kind of looked at the expenditures based on what was in, you know, the Measure Q funds and determined, you know, looked to see that they kind of agreed with what was in the ordinance. I don't think we got a total listing of what was spent, but we did test some, like we picked out a few accounts and just tested those, you know, generally picked some expenditures out of them to test. We kind of sample. We don't do like a forensic level audit where we're testing every expenditure.
So the percentages that you just took off is your choice or the city recommended those choices?
We would make a determination of what we would sample. The city would not select our samples for us.
And then the last question is, how long have you had this contract with the city?
I believe it has been three years. That's as long as I have been involved. There's been a different partner with me every year. As far as I, that's as long as I've been with LSL, so I don't know if it's, we've had a contract longer than that, but I believe it's only been the three years.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I see no more requests for questions from council. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Mr. Ted Weisma.
Welcome, Mr. Weisma.
Thank you. You said there was $70 million money sitting around available, correct?
Uh, no, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lambert, let him finish his questions. We're going to give him just three minutes, and then we'll come back to you. Thank you.
My apologies.
Okay. Again, from what I heard, you said there's $70 million out there that hasn't been spent or is available for use. Also, question, I believe you spent between $1 and $2 million on your own little dog kennel? And to me, that's misuse of city funds. Need to look closely, or he needs to look closer at what you've spent it on and truly see that that's being financially responsible. Because from what I could see under the past year, you have not been financially responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisma.
Our next speaker is Ms. Marsha Weisma.
And just to clarify, will she step on up, Mr. Lambert? We're going to have all questions asked, and we'll get back to you to answer those questions. Welcome, Mrs. Weisma, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sydney, I'd like to congratulate you for doing 95% of organization on this agenda, because the others were promoted up or promoted out. So it's 10 months. Why is it taking so long? I would like an answer to that. It should not be that long for an audit. It ended in June 30. Give them three months. We don't need 10. Now, I also heard $70 million, that figure. Okay, let's talk about it. Who initiated the Route 66 Dog Kennel or Humane Society? And you blew apart a nonprofit 501(c)(3), which is our Humane Society. It's been there since 1950, and you just blew it all apart and you didn't give a damn. I'm really upset about that. And I'd like to have a clarification from our gentleman that says, Tex Williams was very clear, and he said, "I would like to know if there was a percentage or given to you, or did you contract it?" And you said the contract was three years. That percentage was to be used for Measure Q funds? Please comment on that as to why and which ones were used, if available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weisma.
We have no more comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for questions. I'm going to ask first, Mr. Lambert, go ahead and clarify again. I think it was 65.9 that you rounded to about $70 million, and the term was not available. But again, can you explain that slide? I think you're muted.
Jamie, you're muted.
Mr. Lambert, I believe you might be muted at your end.
There we go.
Okay, sorry, I didn't have permission to unmute myself. So, yes, so the city's total net position is 65.9 million. However, that's just, you know, total assets less total liabilities, and then the remainder is the net position of the city. So really, the city has 82.9 million or 83 million invested in capital assets. And then they have about $6 million that is restricted for other purposes. So really, you know, those are funds that the city can't readily access. So really, the city has a negative unrestricted net position of about $23 million. So I would not describe the 65.9 million as just funds. What I was saying is those are not funds that are just lying around. Those are not funds that are readily available for the city to use.
Thank you. And the next question, I'm actually going to direct this to the city manager. And I know that February is typical to get the audits. Could you explain the procedure for the audit?
Yes, the audit begins at, before the fiscal year ends, and then after the fiscal year ends, the auditors typically come out, and I don't know, I wasn't here at the time, but typically they'll come out onsite after the books can close. We cannot close the books, because we have accruals, which means we get money that comes in and invoices that come in for the fiscal year after the close of the fiscal year. So we have to wait until September. We wait all the way through August for all of those final invoices and payments to come in. We close the books. So the auditors can't even come out until after that point. At that point, staff still has a lot of evaluating and processes to go through in the accounting system before the auditors come out. The soonest that they can come out is typically October. They'll usually come out to every city in every entity, government agency, between October, November, so that the complete closing of the books can happen about December. Typically, it's by December. We did have some extenuating circumstances, where we do have some other demands going on for finance right now, in that we're in the process of a system conversion. It is very intensified workload for the accounting staff. And again, I wasn't here to know the exact circumstances, which I know Sydney can elaborate, but I do know coming in, a system conversion is very tasking to the finance staff, and we are short-staffed. So it has extended, but we, it takes through the December to typically go through an audit process, and then January, February is typically when you would see the financial statements. We are slightly behind based on those extenuating circumstances.
Okay, so before I move on to the next question, so Finance Director, did you want to add to that?
So we began our system implementation around January. While we were still conducting the audit for this fiscal year, we also lost a very valuable staff member who is kind of a point guard on some of these processes. And we have a very And we have a very new staff this year, so they're still training, including myself, and being familiar with several of these processes. In addition to that, we took in a different contract this year on a very specific part of the audit, which is the Gatsby 75 study. So, if you're familiar with the pension portion of the audit, it's a very intense study that we conduct or we hire someone to conduct that tells us how much pension we are liable for. And there, through a bunch of different calculations, they present this figure to our auditors to close out the books. So, by us hiring a new contract, they extended their time, becoming familiar with our books as well, and submitted their study late, which also impeded the final chapter, basically, on the audit. So, we've had a few hurdles to get over this fiscal year. But we are already pre-gaming that for next year. We've already started to get our contracts together for next year and get them some information ahead of time so that we don't have the same stressors that we did this year.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Councilmember Williams, questions?
Someone explain that negative 23 million.
Um, so, when you're looking at net position, you, it's difficult to state, and when you're looking in the picture of cash, a negative net position basically means that you have a load of assets. We have cars, infrastructure, buildings, roads, sewer line. All of these equate to the large dollar that Jamie just spoke of. When you remove from those items the liability, what we owe for that, the difference between the two, which is a negative number, actually gives us just our value of current cash. So, in our world, sometimes a negative isn't a bad thing. It's just the way that it's explained. Jamie, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that anymore?
Uh, no, that's pretty much it. And a lot of that has to do with things like the net pension liabilities, the net OPEB liabilities, which are, you know, really, you know, valuations that aren't really current liabilities on the city's books, but do, you know, reflect in the net position overall.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And thank you, Finance Director. I have no one else in the queue to speak. So, do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
I'll second.
I'll move.
And I'll second to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Noble, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Rose. And do we have any discussion? Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes, I knew that was going to come up about the net position because it makes us look like we have all this money, and it's not. What it is, is this building, is this road, is the waste plant. And in the past, we did not have to report the liability we had for the pensions. We've always had that liability. But the laws changed and now we have to report in that, where that negative 23 million comes in, that we have to look at future debt. My primary concern was that all cities currently are losing in regards to fuel tax and to sales tax. And that's what we will be addressing in future budget workshops. My also concern was over the Odessa audit, the fact that we owed $85,000 for those water rights to RDA.
Isn't work, yeah, Odessa will be coming up next.
Right, so, yeah. So, that, so when we look at this, I wanted us to have a better understanding of that because that's what everybody always approaches when you look at that net position. And it really is confusing for the public. So, I just wanted that, in our budget workshops, that we will be, I encourage everyone to attend and to have the questions so we can have the answers. And if we don't, we'll tell you we don't know and we will look into the matters. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, for mentioning the pension liability, Gatsby 68 in 2013. I remember it well. If you go back and look at the numbers, they really changed that year. Councilmember Williams?
I just want to ask one more question. The city manager and the Finance Director, are you guys comfortable with this audit?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I have reviewed it thoroughly and I am comfortable with the audit.
Thank you. I see no more requests for discussion. With that, I'll call. Do we have the motion? I'll call for the vote.
And the motion to approve item 14 carries unanimously.
Thank you. With that, we move on to item 15. Item 15, Odessa Water District Basic Financial Statement for the year ending June 30, 2024. The recommended action is staff recommends the following action. Receive and file the Odessa Water District Basic Financial Statement for the year ending June 30, 2024.
Yes, and it looks like we lost Jamie, but.
I was going to say, are we bringing Mr. Lambert back for that?
Well, I don't believe it's necessary. There really is not a significant change from prior year to this year with the Odessa Water Company. It's just following protocol to make sure that we file this financial statement. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take those, but the numbers are as stands. We have assets on the books of 85,000 or 85 grand. That includes water rights. And then the liabilities due to the successor agency, our funds, that are essentially taken off the books once the RDA closed back in, I think it was 2012. And so, the ending result is the negative net position. Of course, I believe that there will be measures that are coming soon to cure the negative net position with our new BNSF project. So, these numbers will, are destined to change shortly.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from council for staff? I see none. Do we have any requests to speak from public?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, I will call for motion.
I saw move.
And I second, Dan.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble to approve and discussion. Councilmember Hernandez?
I don't know how. I looked at this and I went, how did we borrow 85,000 from RDA and not pay it when the state took all that money? So, I've asked the city manager to look into it. We should have that as an asset, not it, you know, with the negative on the debt, so. But I, but it seemed to me that whenever we had Odessa being presented to us, it was more an approval item and we had to pay for an audit. And either it went over my head and yours, Mr. Mayor, or we would have caught that fact that we were in debt for 85,000 to RDA. So, I look forward to the future to us clarifying that issue. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Seeing no one else requesting for discussion, I call for the vote.
And the motion to approve item 15 carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 16, Barstow Fire Protection District Basic Financial Statement for the year ending June 30, 2024. The recommended action, staff recommends the following action. Receive and file the Barstow Fire Protection District's Basic Financial Statement for the year ending June 30, 2024. Ms. Harris?
Yes, and again, this was part and parcel of Jamie's or Mr. Lambert's presentation. But just to go over some of the notable details, the fund balance for the Fire Protection District has increased this year, even though it presents as an overall negative, the amount of that negative has decreased, which essentially is the fact that some of the debt that the Fire District does have on the books is being paid down. And so, that's the result of what you see here. So, as long as we maintain that the status quo of paying the bills, we should continue to see this debt decrease over the years. So, if there's any other questions, any specific questions that anyone has?
Any questions to staff, council? I had one and I can't find my marking it. It has to do with the numbers on the debt repayments. I'll find it and I'll get it to you later.
Sure.
Do we have a request to speak from the public?
We have none.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council and ask for motion.
So move.
And second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote.
I am waiting for one more vote. Thank you. Motion carries 5-0 on item 16.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 17, Fiscal Year 24, 25 Midyear Budget Status Report and Proposed Budget Adjustments. The staff's recommended action, staff recommends the city council slash fire board approve the budget adjustments and related transfers within the budget adjustments contained within the Exhibit A as discussed herein. Ms. Harris?
Yes, so mid-year this year, due to the delayed timeliness of this presentation, I was able to take some time to evaluate where we were currently in the expenditure budget, just to ensure that the appropriations are being spent as expected, and if not, they could be addressed in this presentation as well. So, I took the opportunity to take a look at some of the larger appropriation adjustments that I'm requesting, just to track for the trend line, to make sure that the spending hasn't changed, that it's increased exponentially or decreased as of a one-time cost, just to make sure that I had a fuller picture on this analysis. So, the most noteworthy discussions for this mid-year request is that sales tax is decreasing and it has no, there has been a trend of decreasing revenues in this fiscal year, which is an indication that public just isn't spending the same amount of dollars that they've spent in the past, which, of course, impacts our general fund and our Measure Q fund. So, there's a recommendation to decrease the revenue expectation there by, I believe, Also noteworthy is the cannabis revenue. This year, there was some catch-up that was done on the annual renewals. So, we received funds that were outstanding in prior periods. So, we're suggesting there be an increase in the revenue this year, but that is not an ongoing expectation in years to come. That is simply to balance what's been received in the current fiscal year. There's also an increase, a significant increase in our professional and legal services. And that has, the most noteworthy impact there is due to the cost of the analysis that is now going into our BNSF project. We are asking our legal team to provide us with a lot of insight and a lot more analysis during this course of the year because we're gaining momentum on closing some of the big processes in that project there. So, as we get closer, the time that we're putting in is being increasing. So, of course, the cost increases. Utilities have also increased as well. I spoke with our Public Works Superintendent earlier today just to kind of gain a better understanding on why these utility costs have increased almost exponentially. I was told that during the course of the year, our meters for water were upgraded. So, we had old-fashioned, regular meters that needed to be monitored manually, and they have gone to a digital type of meter. And in that process, we were informed by water that we would see a difference in cost. I guess the new meters catch water usage more accurately. So, our increase, our costs have increased quite a bit in all of the different water meters across the different parks. We have had some different landscaping and some things happen at the parks which have caused an increase in usage, but that's not the sole reason why the increase is extensive. We also had some realignment of CIP projects. So, if you recall, prior year, we removed a lot of the CIP projects from the budget due to some inactivity, and we slowly, one by one, started bringing those projects back to reintroduce them to council, get more approval, and make sure that the grants and the funds were refreshed. So, as those projects were adopted throughout the course of the year, the appropriation for the expenditure side was also adopted. But we need to realign the revenue side on the funds that are going to come in from whatever grant source. So, there, you'll see kind of an offset on the revenues and expenditures with that large amount. So, total in all, the net effect on the increases of the appropriation are to increase the budget by $891,000. And that is to get us through the remainder of this fiscal year.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams, questions?
What is the total number of decrease for the tax revenue coming in? What's that total number?
So, for sales tax, we are asking a decrease of 644,000 on the general fund side, on the Measure Q side. Let's see, we're looking at... We're looking at a decrease of 700,000. So, that brings us to about a million?
Three.
Three for the decrease. And if you, if you just look at those two by themselves, yes, you see the cause for concern there.
The legal increase, what's that? What's the number on that one?
You know what? That impacts several different funds, so I did not.
Okay.
Take the time to adjust the numbers like that.
What about the decrease in TOT?
I don't believe we're decreasing TOT this year.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I know that the last time we had the discussion, the TOT was down.
Right. No, this is, our TOT is actually on par to receive what we've budgeted this year.
Good, thank you.
I see no more questions from council. Do we have requests to speak from the public?
We have none.
Okay. Welcome, bring it back to council for questions. Councilmember Hernandez, questions?
I had a question regarding the legal fees for big. Wasn't my understanding that we are supposed to be reimbursed for that funding? Is that correct?
That is correct. And in several different avenues, we are being reimbursed. At this point in time, not all of the costs have been reimbursed. So, it happens cyclically, basically. So, as we go along, we will do a true-up with BNSF and they will pay outstanding portions, and it's been ongoing. We bill them monthly, they submit payments monthly by monthly, depending on, you know, the amounts. But currently, we're just presenting the appropriation side for the cost because I know that that's what we'll need to get through this fiscal year.
Right.
I don't know that all of the outstanding bills will be received this fiscal year, but we do have a true-up that happens at fiscal year end. So, I will be back with another adjustment at year end and we can actually see what revenues we've received.
No, I wanted that clarification because that was my understanding, to make sure that we are reimbursed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. I see no more requests for questions. I'll call for the vote. I'm sorry, I call for a motion.
I'll second to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Rose. Is there any discussion? You'll have to speak up because I called for the vote. The board's cleared, so any discussion? Okay, vote please.
And the motion to approve item 17 carries 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to item 18. Item 18 is opposition of Senate Bill 79, SB 79. The recommended action, staff recommends the city council direct staff to communicate to the city's, I'm sorry, communicate... the cities, I'm sorry, communicate the cities' opposition to the state legislators, the League of California Cities, CalCities, and other relevant stakeholders. Presenting, Mr. Matthews.
Oh, I think the city manager is going to start, but I'm happy to also dive in. Before he was opposition to a land use bill proposed by State Senator Weiner out of San Francisco and others regarding taking away local control about housing development and shifting the focus from what might be right for Barstow and our community to what Sacramento and San Francisco legislators think is right for us. The CalCities has called for opposition from cities across the state on this bill, and part of what it would do is it grants certain transit agencies unlimited power to, regardless of anything in our codes, anything in our general plan, anything in the Barstow municipal code, to approve certain kinds of housing on land that they own or control. And I jumped in ahead of the city manager there.
Very well said. Thank you, Matthew.
Do I have any questions of staff by council? Seeing none, do we have any public requests to speak?
Yes, we have one, Ms. Virginia Brown.
Virginia Brown, Barstow, California. That kind of threw me off there. I would really recommend we go with staff on this, having read this thing. It is long and tedious reading, but it's not what Barstow needs. We don't, you know, we fought to keep our fire local, our police local. We wanted to make sure that we're in control of maintaining the standards by which we operate. If we give this over to Sacramento, and I hope they're watching, it's not good. I've seen what they do with a lot of the things that they take over. Barstow doesn't need them coming in. We don't need them making decisions for us, what we build, where we build, how we build it, and allowing third parties to come in, transit parties to come in and say, hey, we're going to do this, and thumb their noses. We're not allowed to do it as local citizens who own our property. We have to go by the ordinances, then the laws and the policies. It would be kind of unfair then to give it over to Sacramento to allow these other outside entities to come in and say, we're just going to snub your laws and your policies and do what we want. And I would hate to think, because I've got a lot of desert around my house, that I could be sitting there one day, and they just put whatever they want right across the street. So I just wanted to get up and say, good job on this recommendation, staff. I approve it, and I hope that we run with their recommendation this time, because it's really important. And if you haven't read it, read it. It's a long read, but it's worth reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
We have no more comment on this item.
Okay. With that, I bring it back to council for questions. Seeing no questions, I'll call for a motion.
I shall move.
And second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hernandez, a second by Councilmember Noble. Any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, I call for the vote.
And motion to approve item eighteen carries five zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. General non-agenda public comment. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the governing board on matters not on the agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. All requests to speak must be received prior to the agenda item being addressed. If special accommodations are required, a forty-eight hour notice must be given to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We do. Our first speaker is Mr. John Hill.
Welcome, Mr. Hill.
Hello, Mayor. Counsel. The pine trees on Main Street are dying. We should build planter walls to water them. Recently, I had to file a formal complaint to stop my church from replacing their roof before replacing the retaining wall that allowed the roof to be damaged. This was after the mayor stopped the city attorney from ordering an inspection, and an emergency inspection made by Fidel Martinez was ignored by the parish and diocese. The City of Barstow and Main Street Murals created a policy that allows them full rights to all buildings from First Avenue to Seventh Avenue. The definition of monopoly is situation by legal privilege or other agreement in which solely one party, company or cartel, et cetera, exclusively provides a particular product or service dominating that market and generally exerting powerful control over it. Main Street Murals entered into an agreement with the City of Barstow that gives MSM a dominating and powerful control over mural arts in our Arts District. I had been working in the Arts District since 2016. I worked to save the old First Avenue Bridge and was licensed for conceptual design. In 2023, I met Abel of the A to Z Lock and Security Building and was talked, and we talked of a mural for his building. The design I returned with, he liked, and he went to the city himself to gain approval. I don't know if MSM created, that Main Street Murals created, the restriction for art that only allows historical Route sixty-six themes unless approved otherwise, but Abel was told my design would not pass. I told him I would go in for him, and he agreed. The first day I entered City Hall was in November of 2024. I asked to speak about approval and was waiting when a man started talking to me. He was Ray Valls of MSM. I spoke, I was working to paint the A to Z building, and Ray answered that that was his building. He then said that MSM was meeting that night to get rights to buildings in the Arts District. I was quick in stating I didn't think a group could hold a property owner against their will in arts, but I did not argue, and then turned to talks with Ms. Crank for my project. We spoke for a number of meetings and were ready with a design she felt could be seen by the city council. But by January of 2025, I noted that my relationship with Abel was falling. I asked him if MSM had approached him, but he did not answer. In March of this year, Ms. Crank stated Main Street Murals had a new agreement with the city. I asked, but did not get a quick reply. April second, Ms. Crank emailed that MSM had the right to deny any artist a mural project on any building from First Avenue to Seventh Avenue, my interpretation. I soundly state that this agreement gives MSM an unfair monopoly over the Arts District, and I have filed with the city against it, a formal complaint. This action is unfair, and I offer, it costs me work with Abel and his family.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Our next speaker is Mr. Chris Kincaid.
Welcome, Mr. Kincaid.
Thank you. Good evening. My questions are primarily about safety. Safety issues that we've been seeing recently, well, it's been going on a long time. I was just fortunate enough to retire, so I get to see a whole lot more going on in my neighborhood. We've had several violations where we had code enforcement come into our neighborhood. They claim they can't do anything. It's PD's job. We get PD in there, and they tell us it's code enforcement's job. Nothing gets resolved. I know we lost the Humane Society for a while. I understand they're back. You call them, they say it's PD's job. You call PD, they say it's their job. It's not working. It's not working. We have people parking vehicles on the sidewalk. People walk their young children. We have a lot of, a lot of new people moving in our neighborhoods, and they're walking their kids in strollers. They're having to walk in the street, because there's vehicles parked on the sidewalks. Are sidewalks city property? I'm assuming they are. Y'all maintain them. We had PD at the house the other night from our nice neighbor, and he came up and talked to us. He literally had to walk around the truck in the street to get to my house. He couldn't even walk on the sidewalk. Now, did he say anything to them? I don't know. But this has been an ongoing thing. My wife walks every night when she comes home from work. She walks the dog, and she has to walk out in the street. And my neighborhood, when you have to walk around the one corner, it's not a very safe corner to walk around. So my question to you all is, is there something that can be done? Who's running PD? Who's running, you know, everything? It's all, this is all city. I appreciate your time, and I mean, there's some other things that arise too. It's a window tint. I mean, you drive down Main Street and see window tint. It's illegal in the state of California, tint your windshield. You gotta be a seventy on your side windows. When you have limo tint and you can't even see a driver coming straight at you, I would want to be an officer and come up on a vehicle where I couldn't see who was in it. These things can be taken care of by tickets, making these people understand, we're not going to mess around. And that's, that's all I have. I appreciate your time, and I hope that something, you know, something here worked out here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kincaid.
Our next speaker is Ms. Rebecca Rodriguez.
Welcome, Mrs. Rodriguez.
Good evening. So I'm here because this Thursday, my son will be gone three weeks. He ran away. I've made reports with PD. I've followed up. I had leads, I had video, I had everything, and I have not gotten a call back from PD. So my concern is, if my son ran away, what about other people that are going through the same thing? Because all we want is for them to come home safe. And it's not okay. It's not okay for us to do our own investigations. We made a call on Friday, because he was at the AMPM at L Street. A cop never showed. We didn't get a call back for it until an hour later. Nobody showed up, and my son was gone again. I got pictures of license plates, two different ones, and pictures of people that he was with that were adults, that are thirties, years older, older. Who knows what they're influencing him to do, because he feels like he has to, because he's scared to come home? It's terrifying, because I want him to get home before something happens and we can't stop it. And it's too late. It's not okay for us parents to feel that way. So when are the parents of these kids that leave because they feel like they can't be at home? When are we going to be heard and not treated like we're bad parents, because we're not? My son has been involved in several sporting organizations since he was four. I've been a coach in this, in this city for years. I've been brought up in this city doing the same thing. It's not okay. It's not okay for me to have to try to call my friends that are on PD to try to help me, because nobody else is. It's not okay. So when are we going to be heard and not felt like we're bad parents, because our kids are going through more things than we can even imagine at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez. Before we move on, because we have some new people here, the council is listening. The council will address your concerns. That comes up a few minutes down the agenda. So Councilmember Williams was concerned that you might leave, so please stick around. Thank you. Next.
Our next speaker is Mr. Ted Wiesma.
Welcome, Mr. Wiesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is a concern that I have. Now, I've heard this secondhand, but I was told that somebody wanted to speak to our city manager, but the city manager policy was that she was too busy to talk to citizens. Even Willie had an open-door policy, so I would hope that what I heard is incorrect and that she does have an open-door policy to listen to the citizens when they want to talk to her. I think that's part of the job, really. Previously, I brought up noise out here in the corridor. It's very simple to block that with a few panels with noise absorbent material on them, and yet I haven't seen any action on that or heard that there would be any action on that. Also, it's getting towards summer, and you used to have a water cooler out there, although you never had cups. It'd be nice to put some water cooler out there and some cups, because it is going to get hot around here. My other item is the sales tax. I think you're into projecting the loss that you're going to get as all these tariffs hit. It's going to hit people's pocketbooks, and they are not going to have money to go out and spend it. They're not going to be going to Vegas as often. I think you're really going to get hit on the loss of sales tax. So maybe you need to look at what you're projecting and note that it's going to be less money than what you think. My other item, if I can find it on here... I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiesma.
Our next speaker is Ms. Virginia Brown.
Welcome, Mrs. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, for Ms. Rodriguez, it's sad, but it's true, and hers isn't the only one. In the past three weeks, I have been contacted by eight different sets of parents. Their kids are on the streets, and they're asking me to go out and find them. Don't ask me why, but probably because when my daughter was fifteen, she ran away, and we had her in the PAL program. So if you have your kid in the PAL program, you assume everything's fine. But she got into junior high, got into high school, got mixed up with some people, and she came home, everything was fine. She was the daughter of all daughters at home. But we started noticing some temperament differences, and the next thing you know, yes, she's run away. We too put in a police report, and they knew her. They had her updated photo. Oh, she was part of the PAL program. She graduated with honors. Everything was great with them, too. They couldn't understand it. During their investigation, they came up empty-handed. They went through her emails, her text messages, everything that young teenagers have that the parents are supposed to be watching, and we thought we were. And apparently, we did, because they said, we couldn't find you anything, Ms. Brown. But my husband and I had to do our own investigation. We finally found her in San Bernardino, and I called the police, and I said, I've got her on the phone. Could you please tap my line and give me an exact address, and I will go get her? At that point, they finally said, oh, oh, yeah, maybe that's a good idea. We'll tap your line. These are things that, when you have a teenager that's missing, they might want to rethink how they're looking for it. She also ran away with a nineteen-year-old friend, and we had a restraining order against him. When they picked her up, they said, oh, there's nothing we can do. She's, you know, she's going to be sixteen soon, so they let the guy go. I really feel for her. I feel for these other parents, and it's hard. It's really hard, because I relive it when I hear their stories. You can be a great parent. I have four other kids. Guess what? One of them is the most brilliant. She's getting ready to get her doctorate in technology. The other one, he passed away at thirty-one, but he was outstanding right till the end. You always have that one, that one little one that's going to, you know, test your skills as a parent and your ability to handle things. But maybe we should, maybe we should figure out a way to put together a task force for just our runaways. We have them for everything else. Maybe that's an idea, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Our last speaker tonight is Mr. Jim Brown.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Mayor, council, staff, Jim Brown, Barstow. I was listening to Benny Feder, and I wasn't going to say anything, but he called my name out. He called Marcia's name out. He called E.T. Snail's name out. And, and I guess basically, we were lying about what happened. And so I was at a meeting, I was at a meeting, and Paul Courtney was there. And after the meeting, me and Paul Courtney had a talk. We had a long talk, an hour talk. And he told me what had happened, right there, right there in that door. He told me. He said, they were supposed to take you down. They were supposed to take you down, and they were in on it. The chief, the city manager, and the mayor were in on it to take me down. And the reason why they wanted to take me down, and I told Paul, I said... the reason why they wanted to take me down, and I told Paul, I said, Paul, he was blaming me for Hopkins dismissal. I said, whoa, 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 Paul. I said, you better talk to Tex. You better talk to Leonard. You better talk to Mary Bell. Because they're the one that brought Latrina on the show. They also brought the, uh, uh, Mary Bell's letter that you wrote to the county. And I told Paul, that's who you need to talk to. Stop accusing me of trying to get rid of someone. And then, when, uh, Vassilla Fields came and did it right here to me, he said that Espinoza was in on that one also. And but y'all gave this man a way out. You gave him a way out. You gave him his retirement. And that investigation was a farce because he didn't call me. Didn't call me at all. Right now, he should be sitting in jail, not having no retirement. And that's wrong. And y'all did it. Y'all did it. This council did it, gave it to him. And y'all said, trust the process. That's the process.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
We have no more comment.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just have one update to give, and that is that the military banners have been received and they have been scheduled to be installed and should be installed by next week. I would also like to just give a brief update on my last four weeks, my first four weeks with the city. It has been very busy and there is a lot going on. So I'm very happy to be here. I understand Mr. Weisma made the comment about nonresponsiveness and I hope, I apologize if that was relayed, but there has been a lot going on the past four weeks. And I am working through a meeting with a lot of community groups and individuals, returning a lot of phone calls. So I am working with staff to get some scheduled time. And I definitely have an open door policy and talking about a lot of strategy, actually. It has only been four weeks, so I will, I do have a lot of things to come. But communication out to the public is absolutely a top priority for me. And I am looking at avenues that the city as a whole can give more information out to the public in an easy, understandable way rather than having to follow Facebook. Or I know our, our city's website has some work that is definitely recognized and that is also a goal internally for staff. There are many, many goals to come. And I know a lot of communication will come out through the next, the next two months as we go through the budget process and developing those goals over the next fiscal year. But in that process, there will be a lot of information going out to the public on, on what that plan is. So a lot to come and I'm just very happy to be here. And a lot of work to do, but I am working with a great staff, great team, and very excited to move the city forward.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to public safety updates.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and community. Just kind of give you a brief update on where the fire district currently stands within the last month. Just to let you guys know, our Measure Q asked for the Type 3 brush engine will be, be delivered on Wednesday. So we'll be seeing that apparatus be in reception at Fire Station 361, being delivered by the manufacturer on Wednesday. So you'll see that new fire engine in quarters. Unfortunately, it's going to be not in service until approximately May as we train up our personnel on that apparatus as well as outfit it with the required equipment necessary for its typing, as well as actually just making sure that it's accepted by our mechanics and our fleet services. So you'll see that in quarters. When we do get that in service, we'll do a presentation to the council and community. We may do a little bit of a PIO informational regarding that apparatus, but you'll see that in quarters. If you feel like stopping by the fire station and taking a peek at your new fire engine, you'll see that in the fire station. Also, to let you know, we did have a current structure fire today which unhoused community residents up off of Harvard. Unfortunately, we did have significant cooperation with the Marine Corps Logistics Base due to one of our engines being committed to a previous call. So we only had an initial response of one engine and one paramedic squad and one battalion chief to the structure fire, which what we call would be an extreme structure fire with about a fifty percent involvement upon our first annual arrival. So fortunately, we were able to help assist that residence with some, some aftercare as far as initiating their insurance claim. We assisted them with that as well as Red Cross Services. So we've made up to house them for the night with themselves as well as their family members that are also within the structure. But we did have a response from building and safety, which the, the structure was red tagged and due to, uh, do the circumstance. We were having some issues with the electrical being secured. So there were some safety hazards which our crews cleared about three o'clock this afternoon. So they were committed for about five hours. We did have some assistance from Marine Corps Logistics Base, but we were able to cut them loose probably about two hours into the incident to where they could go back into their service area. We have been having an uptick in refuse fires for the unhoused population. So we've been chasing those fires out within the desert. And also to give you a heads up, we're seeking other cost recovery methods and programs in which we're going to San Diego tomorrow with Adam Loris, the CEO from the hospital to gauge in a, in a, in a significant program which is going to be beneficial and to the community as well as aftercare for the hospital. So we're in brainstorming phases, which will actually bring some, some potential revenue to the fire district as well. So when we get more out of the brainstorming phase and engage a little bit more, we'll bring that further to you guys for presentation approval. So that's still a few months out, but we're going to go brainstorm tomorrow down to San Diego. So that's our end report for the fire district to this point unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Fire Chief Sisneros. Are there any questions to the fire chief? Okay, with that, we'll move on to council committee reports. Councilmember Hernandez, committee reports.
Thank you. On April the third, I attended the Southern California Association of Governments meeting. And their primary focus is on regional recovery and resilience in the face of disasters, especially with the wildfires that occurred. And their focus is also on landscaping with the new, with the new fires and the new CAL FIRE map that went out. And there are more people now in the fire zone than they, in high risk. The other thing I had is ER routes, which really interested me because they addressed where you only have one road in and out and, and how to deal with that. And primarily is communications and outreach. And I'm going to, and also the general plan because the new requirements now by the state where they want the hazards and the public safety programs are supposed to mirror each other. So I have that report and I intend to share it with the city manager in regards to how it affects us. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. We will be meeting at the Military Affairs tomorrow at zero eight. And those that are nonprofit, please come out. This is an opportunity for you to showcase the things that you have going on in your, in your, on your programs and things of that nature to get out to the community. Also, on the twenty-first of April, we will be meeting for the BBTA. And that'll be in Hisperio at nine thirty on the twenty-first of April. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Uh, Councilmember Williams.
Nothing.
Mayor Protem Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. Next month, I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to report out. I said it last time. I'll give you another month. But it, but really, it is, Councilman Williams and I serve on both the Rules and Policy and Homeward Bound. And he has hit the ground running and he has done a lot for both these committees. So I appreciate that he's a great colleague to, to lead these committees. The Rules and Policy met on March twenty-fifth and two of the items that we spent our time on was the tobacco ordinance. And I believe that we are ready to bring that back soon. So we'll be seeing that in a future council meeting. And we also had discussed the, a policy and we're looking really good as far as a policy for the community benefits policy. And that for everybody is, that's the cannabis funds, the money that's been sitting for quite some time. We, we are really close to having a policy so that we can move forward and start spending that money in, back into our community. The next meeting for Rules and Policy will be, excuse me, April twenty-eighth, if I'm not mistaken. And it is at five PM. Homeward Bound, we are meeting, I think we're still scheduled for April ninth, excuse me, April tenth at five PM. And we are asking for donations for undergarments so that we can give back to our nonprofits that help with our homeless. And that's all for my reports. Mr. Mayor?
And Mayor, if I could just clarify, I believe the next Rules and Policy meeting is the twenty-ninth, the Tuesday, the twenty-ninth. Just wanted to confirm we have that right at five PM.
Thank you. Yes, you're, you're correct. It is the twenty-ninth.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rose. Okay, so on March twenty-sixth, I attended by Zoom the Barstow Chamber Economic Development Meeting. And at that meeting, we introduced our new city manager to the committee. And I want to say that with all the organizations that give updates, Genesis Crank gives a wonderful update at those meetings for the city of Barstow. On April second, I attended the SBCTA. Most of it was consent, the only business action item which was closed session and then reported out of closed session. If you're not aware, the executive director, Ray Wolf, is retiring. And we did vote unanimously, the new executive director for the SBCTA will be Kerry Schindler. And I will miss the Military Affairs tomorrow. I have a business engagement. I am the alternate. So I trust Councilmember Noble will be there. He always is. So with that, we will move on to the business of the council. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. What I was concerned is I'd like to see the total bill for the bridge cost now that it's in completion. And the reason behind that is when I was on SBCTA, they had cities where their projects came under budget and they got those funds to be able to use it for infrastructure in this city. So I want to know, my understanding what was budgeted and what we actually spent, there's a difference. So I want to see if there's any funding available that we can get for our streets. And we didn't have the street committee, but we will in May. And I hope that we will have presentations there as to the status of where we are in regards to funds available and projects that we can initiate. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Noble.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Can we take a look at the half-staff? Take a look at, we had that new Shell Station opening up on Main, right off of Barstow Road. The lights are on, but do we have a timeframe on when they're supposed to open up? And then I was going down Main Street the other day and I see Tom's is closed, the burger joint that was right next door to McDonald's. And is, is there a reason? Did they move? Or are we, what, what is the reason why they closed? I, I used to go there and eat and they had good burgers. And for whatever reason, they closed. And I see a, a sign up on the window of some things that they're doing, but not sure what the, the status is. I, I attended the, the Barstow Community College lunching last weekend at President Circle. And I would tell you, that was a fantastic event. Those that were in attendance, I know they had a good time. And those that were recognized at the event for their presentation did an outstanding job. On the thirty-first, I attended the, our city training here at the city council to get our planning commissioners and city councils updated on policies and some things that planning commissioners and city council members should know. Also, on the twenty-eighth, I attended the funeral of a young man out in Fort Irwin on the twenty-eighth by the name of Mr. Rodney Sheetz, who passed away, was a longtime member. Well, he was a military guy, but he was also a civilian that worked out there in Fort Irwin for a number of years and stuff and did a lot of great things for the Fort Irwin community. And when I went to his, his remember ceremony at Sandy Basin, the room was packed. I mean, it was packed full of people who recognized this gentleman for the weight work he has done over the years that he has been here at Fort Irwin and the things that he has done at Fort Irwin. So I just wanted to let the community know that we had an outstanding guy that was, that was there. He passed away, but he was a tremendous, tremendous individual who done a lot for the Fort Irwin community. And with that, I believe that's all I have business-wise.
Thank you, Councilmember Noble. Councilmember Williams.
Been going through the credit card statements and expenditures for the city. I'm going to recommend that, I'm going to ask for a second. I want to see this go to policies, maybe to add or take some credit cards away to see the, see the issues that I, I think is a problem. Also, looking at contracts as well. But the reason why this needs to go to policies, I think that we have a range of policies that are not followed. I'll give you an example. I don't think the fire department ever had their policy brought into the city when they first came in. We never looked at it. That, we need one policy for everyone here. That includes CAL cards and any other credit cards that are out there.
So I would like to second that, but I would like to also add that I think it's great that we're going to review the policy, that we're going to ask our city manager to review it with her staff. As far as taking away CAL cards, that would be a decision after an analysis by our city manager to make those decisions. But as far as the policy, absolutely, I will give you a second and give or allow our city manager time to, to do the analysis and then bring it back to city council. And I believe you'll need some time, correct?
I, I will need some time to review what the difference between the fire department and their specific policy is. I know that I have already spoken to staff about transparency and really updating what we put on the description so it's really clear. And I know I've, I've talked to a few council members about some questions that have come up, but I have had this as just one of those recurring things that comes up. Not, it, it's not unique to this city. It's in every city. Everybody is busy. We're going through the process of if an emergency comes up, we have something, an avenue to use, a quick purchase to, to resolve that as long as we're following the purchasing policy. But then you justify it and you just put this short description. So that's not- So that's not clear to the public and to the council about what the true intent and purpose of that purchase was. So we have spoken on our executive team level on strategizing training, so that we can roll that out to every person that is utilizing or reporting on the CAL card purchases. So we're already in progress with looking at that, and we can absolutely finish that analysis and bring it back to the Rules and Policy.
I appreciate it, yes. So the second, and I just want to make very clear that we are, you know, that it is being looked at, and for those CAL card holders, that there is a policy in place, and if it needs to be revamped, or tightened up, or added to, that that's what, what we're asking our city manager to do, so, thank you.
Thank you. Let the record show, the clock was stopped at 5:09 for Councilwoman Williams. Please continue.
Yeah, so I'm not saying anything has been done wrong. What I'm saying is the policy needs to be in place so we can have a clear vision of what is going on, and making sure that the public understands the expenditures, a little more detail to what's, what's going on. Secondly, our city manager has only been here, you said, four weeks, right? Four, five weeks, whatever it is. I got to tell you, I am personally impressed, the, the way she's being pulled right now at, at city hall, from staff to city council members to, you know, everyone else, the public, I don't know how you're doing it, but you're doing, you're doing a good job. When you can send someone a text at 10:30 at night, and you get an answer back, you're like, "What the heck?" You know, so we know she's burning a candle at both ends, and we appreciate it. I think the staff appreciates it, and I think everyone else does, too. We got to do a better job. This IT thing with this, with this not, not being live tonight, it's not working. It's not working. We paid too much money for this, not to have these kind of mistakes. If that's the case, let's go Facebook Live, let's, let's, let's start doing some stuff here that we're going to use other means so the public can see these meetings. It's, it's the people's government. They, they own us. They represent, we represent them, and we got to do that. As far as the, going back to the Measure Q commissioners, I, I felt that it was a decision that I had to make, and, you know, I'll live with that decision, and the public and everyone else will look at it however they want to. It's not an intent to say that someone's not qualified. For me, it was a personal issue that we had to, you know, in my district four, that I had had two people that were, had a relationship or related or whatever. It was a problem for me, and the public's looking at me, and so I, I decided to do that. And it's not against anyone's capability of running or, or doing their job. It was just a, a problem for me in that position. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Mayor Pro Tem Rose.
Thank you. So as far as Measure Q, I just want to congratulate everybody that was appointed tonight, and I look forward to hearing when their first meeting will be, because now we have, it's fully staffed, so I'm, I'm happy about that. Before, Mr. Kincaid, before you leave, can you please give your street name to our city clerk, so that we know what street that you are referring to? And I know that it may not just pertain to your street, but at least we have a starting point. Thank you. Also, Ms. Rodriguez, my complete prayers for you and your family, and a safe return for your son. It, it breaks my heart to hear such sad stories, and, you know, we're a small, tight community, so if there's anything that any one of us can help to ensure also that, you know, our city manager will look into the response, and, you know, what we can do as a city, that is going to happen. I can assure you that our city manager's already taken note on that. I, too, had attended the President's Circle. There was quite a few of us, and that's Barstow Community College way of, of, it's a fundraiser, money that goes back into our community, to our students, and we do have a trustee that's sitting out in the audience, and it's just a great way that the college does contribute back to the very community that we live in, that we work in, and that we support. So I just want to, you know, thank Dr. Bag and the entire trustees up, up the college for, for always investing in the city of Barstow, so thank you. And the last thing is that we do have a new city manager, and I, too, am extremely pleased with everything that Ms. Clayton has bring into the table. She has a great vision, and she's a forward thinker, and she is very transparent, and it, it really is discerning to me to hear somebody come to the podium and say something that they heard. Because she does, and I know that she has an open-door policy, a simple phone call would have been, or a visit to, to Ms. Clayton's office would have answered that question, because when something like that comes to the podium, and I have never seen her not have an open-door policy, though, you know, you can say whatever you want at the podium, which we appreciate, but I know that that's not true, and, and it can create rumors, and rumors can hurt people. And so I do ask that if you do have concerns, please reach out to our city manager. She's going to be available, she will make herself available in spite of her very busy schedule. If she's not going to meet with you at that moment, she will get back to you, and I can guarantee you that, because that's all I've known of her since she has become our city manager, so I just want to thank you for that, and just welcome the community to reach out. With that, Mr. Mayor, that is all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, I want to clarify one thing. Mr. Hill said the mayor stopped the city attorney from ordering an inspection. What I told Mr. Hill is the city attorney has no authority to order staff. That would be for an inspection, for delivering water, for anything in the city. I spoke with the city attorney, he agrees with me. He has no authority to direct staff, and that's what Mr. Hill was told. Mr. Kincaid, yes, please leave your information here, but also call your council member or myself, the mayor, if you're not getting a response immediately. Give us a call. That what you described does sound like a hazard condition, so please, we appreciate that you come here and let us know, because if we don't know, we can't help solve that issue for you. Mrs. Rodriguez, I concur with the Mayor Pro Tem. And city manager, I would like to please see the police report on what's been done on that issue, and could we please talk to Ms. Rodriguez and be sure that we are doing everything we can to help her locate, I'm sorry, I didn't put in my notes, son or daughter? Was it a daughter? Son, okay. And again, city manager is working long hours, she's trying to meet with as many people as possible. I have a list of people that want to meet with her, that I'm talking with. If in my communication I said she's too busy, I didn't mean for it to come out that way. We're just trying to work down a list. Mr. Weisman, one of your concerns, I've actually taken to her, and she's working on that issue. I'll discuss it with you afterwards.
Mr. Weisman?
And one more thing to clear up, when Mr. Brown said that the city manager, chief, and mayor ordered him to be taken down, that was a prior city manager, chief, and mayor. So just to, since he didn't make that clear, just to make it clear for everybody else, we didn't order for him to be taken down. I, I like Mr. Brown, he's a good guy. So with that, by consensus of the members, without objection, this meeting will be adjourned at 9:10 PM.